Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. This is the founding program here on Lease Assets Channel TV created and produced by Dr. Benjamin Twin B. Brown. I am Wilmington Second District Councilwoman and Special Executive Assistant Shanae Darby, your host for today. We will bring you community updates first. To continue the legacy of CCC in the Spiritual Revival Hour, we are fundraising to start the workshops for the youth back up. Community Communications Corporation is the founding hands-on, onsite, and studio video production workshop experience. We serve at least 50 after-school youth each week from different centers and agencies along with summer youth five hours a day, five days a week with special groups on weekends. With all of the school dropouts, youth hanging in parks and on corners, some involving themselves in crime and violence, there's parents losing control of their children at home associated with bad attitudes and behaviors, Dr. Benjamin Twin B. Brown along with us here at CCC in the Spiritual Revival Hour witnessed the serious need for jobs and job training for youth and young adults. CCC has a complete studio of equipment held for us through the good graces of Chandra Pitts at the Freedom Center located at 31 West 31st Street in Wilmington, Delaware until we can find funding to continue the operations. So if you're interested, you can make sure that you can donate to the work that we're doing around youth. For today, we have a special guest, former council president Hanifa Shabazz. She was here, she was supposed to be here with us for Women's History Month to honor her as being the first woman president on Wilmington City Council. So after that, we will return after these words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour presenting words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education. I hope you enjoyed our community update. Again, I am Wilmington Second District Councilperson and Special Executive Assistant Shanae Darby, your host for today. We have a special guest with us here today, former council president Hanifa Shabazz. So how are you today?
I'm well, thank you.
Well, I'm so happy to have you here. I know we were celebrating Women's History Month in March and we were trying to get you on, but we couldn't get you into the schedule. But Women's History is 365 days out the year. Black History is every day too. So it's always good to bring on special guests to have these conversations about their accomplishments, how they contributed to history here in our own state. So Mr. Brown brags about you being his student, taking his hands-on workshops. What is your connection to CCC, to the Spiritual Revival Hour, to Mr. Brown?
Well, first of all, I am a dear friend and a proud to say that I'm a mentee of Reverend Twin B. Brown's program. We did, when I was publishing my Drumbeat newspaper, we did a commentary every Sunday, every Sunday morning to talk about what was happening with the Drumbeat Publishing. And so he is the one who has helped me to shape my public speaking, my ability to articulate my points. I just owe a lot to him for what he has embedded in me as a public figure and also speaking to the public.
Yeah, so that's exactly what I'm learning as I'm getting the training under Mr. Brown is exactly that, like the public speaking, the work in regards to just being able to articulate yourself and being on TV and all of the things, all of the things you could think of behind the scenes that you need to do. So how has the media training that Mr. Brown that you received at CCC, how has that impacted the work that you have done and that you do now?
Well, you know, a lot of times you need that 30-second elevator speech. He's taught me how to take a half an hour conversation and comprise it down and articulate it so it's understood, heard, and get a response from. And in the public service, that's the tool that you need, not only in speaking, but debating on the floor, your points, advocating for your issues. Those are the most important tools that I've taken that has helped me to be successful.
Yes, yeah, so Mr. Brown, he talks about you all the time. He was like, she is one of my students. He was excited for you to come on the show, for us to do this interview. Another piece that I want to hit on is like prior to you even being on council, right? You were very involved in your community from being like an entrepreneur, running businesses, a publishing company, a art gallery, like all of these things. Can you talk a little bit about like your community work that you did prior to even being on council and how involved you were?
Well, I'm trying to think where did it start? It was the bookstore. My former husband and I owned a bookstore that expanded to an art gallery and we were vendors. And so going around the country and vending, you know, our wares, our books, we saw that there was other cities having celebrations of the African culture. So we said Wilmington needs one. So we came back and put together the African Festival and expanded to African Festival and Parade. We formed a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization and it grew to become the sixth largest cultural event in the state of Delaware. And I'm proud to say that we're in the Tourism Hall of Fame as well. Then we knew we had to market what was going on and we partnered with Harmon Carey, the African American Historical Society. He was giving the first black history conference and we worked with him to put that together, myself and some other mentees of Reverend Brown. And we had needed to communicate what was going on and then that formed the Drumbeat Newspaper. It started off as GLU, Groups Laboring United for Empowerment. And then we changed the name to Drumbeat and we published that for, I mean, I think like 13 years. When we were doing the African Festival, we needed a way to raise money and at every festival, people like to eat.
Yeah, they do.
And everyone wants a good hot fish sandwich. So I created the African Festival Hot Fish Sandwich and African Fries because I said we were not French, we were African, so our fries were African fries.
I love it.
And we were so successful with that, I took that enterprise and bought it into a restaurant and called it Hanifa's Kitchen. So between the bookstore and art gallery where we had lectures and workshops and spoken word events, then the newspaper that kept the word out to the community of the positive things that was happening in our community, coupled with being able to come on television with that Drumbeat Commentary here on Channel 28 with Reverend Brown, and then yearly celebrating our culture through our African Festival, created an economic engine in our community because the community knew that once a year that they could sell their wares and goods and make a good piece of money. Because again, we were the sixth largest event in the state, so it was a good economic engine. And then the Hanifa's Kitchen, well, the people started enjoying the food so much, we owned the property, we put the restaurant inside the property and it became known as the African Festival Fish Sandwich and Fish Hoagie Place to Be.
Right, right.
Right across from Walt's Chicken. So you could come on the corner of Vander Avenue, you get your Walt's Chicken, you get your fish, go home and feed your family and, you know.
Yeah, I love it, I love it, yes. Have you ever thought about opening your restaurant back up?
Oh, you just don't. 15 years it's been closed and tell you, I'm still getting people asking me for my food. I'm just too, I don't say I'm too old, I'm just tired to do that, but I'm thinking about doing a food truck, I keep saying that, but I got so, my hands in so many fires, I'm taking my time.
Yes, yes. And the African Festival, when is that? Is it still happening in Wilmington?
It doesn't, you know, we did one where we bought Freddie Jackson, we had The Moments, it was so large, it put us in a financial strife. And so, you know, we never really recovered from that. We've tried to get other organizations to join on and take the lead and we're working right now with the Cultural Restoration with Richard Rawl and his wife, Allyshah. We're working with them and hope, because I look at them as our mini-me, us continuing the culture expression, hopefully that we can get them to bring it back because we definitely, definitely need it.
Yeah, they would be the power couple to do that.
Wouldn't they be?
Yeah, that would be perfect, I love it.
There were so many, when the festival came, the first year we did our parade, Chester came walking down and strutting down 10th Street and Wilmington said, no, Chester can't come in here and take over our street. So all of the different drill teams started across the city, across the state. So our last festival, our last parade, we had 52 marching and drill teams in our parade. It was, it was amazing.
Yes, I love it, I love it. Our cultural expression is so key and important. I love that even before you were a council person, you were very involved, you were doing organizing work, activism work, you were like very involved in your community. So what was like that moment or that point you were like, I'm running for office? Like what inspired that? Like what made you want to get into politics?
Well, the seat was open and at that time, Councilwoman, now State Rep Stephanie T. Bolden was urging me to run the term before, but it was too late in the timing that I wasn't ready. So then the opportunity came again. There was, I was out doing gardening in front of my house and there was a group of children walking down the street with two white boys, about 14, 16 years old, and they kept telling children, come go with me. And I'm like, well, who are these children in South Bridge gathering up little black kids and telling, come go with me? And I stopped them and asked them, well, where are you going? And they were going around the corner till church was doing some things, but the fact that they could come in our neighborhood and just gather our children because of free clothes and hot dogs really got under me. So who we called the mayor of South Bridge was Winston Truitt. Winston Truitt saw me and he said, Hanifa, that's why you should run for office. And so he kept pushing me and pushing me and I bit the bug. My family said yes. And at that time, I was, we were making transition into my life with the businesses and I saw it as an opportunity to keep doing what I was doing, but in a different position. I ran, I had two opponents and I won with 56% of the vote.
Yes, brag about that.
Yeah, I did, that's why.
Brag about that one, listen, I understand. And how many terms did you serve as you were just a council person?
Three terms.
Three terms, okay.
For 12 years, yes.
So after your three terms, you were like, I'm running for council president. So what made that decision? Like how, like what inspired that?
Well, I mean, you're always looking for growth and development, you know, and as a 12-year council member and working closely with the past presidents, you know, I just saw there was things that I felt that maybe through my leadership training that I could add to the legislative branch of government. And so I jumped in, the opportunity was there, and again, I was blessed to be successful.
Yes, yes. And what was the feeling like to win the seat in 2016 and be the first woman president of council? So sometimes like being the first brings a lot of pressure sometimes, like even being the first woman, being the first black person. What were the barriers? What were some of those things?
Well, I knew that me stepping into a position that's been held by men and wingtips for as long as council has been in existence was going to be a different walk for me in my stilettos. And I had already experienced as a woman council member, being at the table at times
... and tribulations being the first. Anytime you're the first in anything, you have to, you're the pioneer that all you get is the arrows in your back. And then everybody else can easy ride along the road.
Right. So we're going to continue this conversation and interview, but I hope that you guys enjoy the first commentary of the Spiritual Revival Hour with our former president Hanifa Shabazz. When we come back, we will continue this conversation. So after these words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education, we'll be back. Thank you.
Attention everyone on Medicare. New Medicare Advantage Plans are now available. Did you know that you may be eligible for additional Medicare-approved benefits that include free eyeglasses, free hearing aids, free meal delivery, free rides to medical appointments, and much more? The Medicare Benefits Hotline is now open. Just call the toll-free number on your screen now to see if you qualify for additional Medicare benefits and make sure you're getting all the benefits you deserve. Just call 800-520-3805 now. In addition to dental, vision, hearing, and prescription drug coverage, you may also qualify for $0 monthly premiums, $0 deductibles, and no copays. Just call the toll-free number on your screen now to see if you're eligible for additional Medicare benefits that may include free eyeglasses, free hearing aids, free meal delivery, free rides to medical appointments, and much more. The call and Medicare benefits review are absolutely free. There's no obligation to enroll. Just call 800-520-3805 to see if you qualify.
We know it's cold, but we're on fire. This tax season, nobody beats Brandywine. Nobody. It's an all-out price war. You haven't seen prices in furniture, mattresses, rugs, accessories, anywhere, nor will you anywhere. We'd love you to shop around, because this tax season, nobody beats Brandywine Furniture.
Look for a way to break free. Never got you tied up. Listen to these words from me. Your situation may seem hopeless, but it's not the end. Know you are burdened and have shackles on your feet. Now I want you to know, know about your breakthrough.
You're about to breakthrough. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Jesus took the key and gave it to you.
So here's what you gotta do.
Shake a loose, everything that binds you up.
Who told you?
Who told you that you can't make it?
God said it.
When God said that you can take it. Shake a loose, everything that binds you up.
Crazy.
Raise your life is your last chance.
Get up and do the thing.
Do the thing, yes, damn.
I heard you were feeling down. That seed had had you bad. No, you don't have to stay. Yes, you can leave today, just like in the Bible days. Women begin to cry. Those girls start to shaking. Those chains start to break down.
I want you to know, know about your breakthrough.
Jesus took the key and gave it to you. Here's what you gotta do.
Shake a loose, everything that binds you up.
Who told you?
Who told you that you can't make it?
You're what you're trying to do.
Shake a loose, everything that binds you up.
Crazy.
Raise your life is your last chance.
Get up and do the thing.
Shake a loose, everything that binds you up.
Who told you you can't make it?
When God said that you can't take it.
Shake it.
Shake a loose, everything that binds you up.
Crazy.
Raise your life is your last chance.
Get up and do the thing.
Don't let the enemy keep you.
Keep you and bind you.
Raise your way through.
Come on and shake a loose.
Come on and shake loose.
And never worry.
Every worry, every pain.
Raise your way through.
Come on and shake a loose.
Come on and shake loose.
And all of those chains.
Those chains that bind you.
All of them, mind.
Only remind.
Crazy.
Raise your way through.
Come on and shake a loose.
Come on and shake loose.
All the love.
All the love.
Know that he will.
Know that he will.
Stop your pain.
Raise your way through.
Come on and shake.
Come on and shake.
Now you gotta do is shake yourself loose.
Lift your hands.
Lift those hands.
Come on and let's dance.
Come on and let's dance.
Shake yourself loose. Scream and shout.
Scream and shout.
He brought you out.
He brought you out.
Shake yourself loose. Lose your feet.
Lose your feet.
Now move your feet.
Move your feet.
Shake yourself loose.
Ooh.
Ha, ha.
Shout.
Shout for joy.
Make some noise, because I'm free.
Free.
Good God almighty.
Free.
He told me in his word that.
Free.
That I could be free, yeah.
Free.
The devil tried to stop me.
Free.
He tried to block me.
Free.
But I got away.
Free.
I got the key.
Free.
At last.
Free.
Thank God almighty.
Free.
Who the son says free?
Free.
And free indeed.
Free.
He lost the shackles.
Free.
That were binding me.
Free.
So get on your feet.
Free.
And sing with me.
Free.
You out there feeling bad? Let me tell you, you can break free, break free.
Woo.
You out there feeling bad? Let me tell you, you can break free, break free. You out there feeling bad? Let me tell you, you can break free, break free.
Uh-huh.
You out there feeling bad? Let me tell you, you can break free, break free.
Free.
At last.
Free.
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 Shake yourself loose.
I'm Shanae Darby inviting you to consider what better way to celebrate Black History Month than to support a legend of over 50-plus years of dedicated, committed services to the community. Dr. Benjamin Twinby Brown and Community Communications Corporation introduced internet cable to Wilmington and Newcastle County. It is also the creator of leased-assess TV programming you now enjoy here on Channel 28. It is the godfather of the annual Thanksgiving/Christmas dinner in Turkey, giveaways to the community for over 40 years. One of the founding members of the Minister's Action Councils, known as IMAC, conducted the largest successful voter education and registration drive ever in our county. For over 42 years, conducted studio and onsite, hands-on video workshops for youth and adults. Created the longest airing local cable TV programming and many more broadcasting entities. He is still active and productive to this day. Oh, what a legacy. If you would like to support Dr. Benjamin Twinby Brown and Community Communications Corporation, contact us at 302-287-4413. If your call is not answered, please leave a clear message carefully stating your name, an email address, and detailing information will be emailed to you promptly. Just in case you're just joining us this morning, I am Shanae Darby, Second District City Councilwoman and Special Executive Assistant to Dr. Benjamin Twinby Brown. In our first commentary earlier, we talked about the different hats and roles and community positions that our former president, Dr. Hanifa Shabazz, held. I know we were having conversations about your connection to like Dr. Brown and to media education and training, but I know as even a legislator, there's some work that you did to establish some channels that exist today that I could say that's really connected probably to like the work that you did with probably with Dr. Brown, right?
Yes.
So if we could talk about that a little bit, that would be great.
Absolutely. Well, as some people might not know, but they need to know that Reverend Twinby Brown was the one who established our community Channel 28.
Yep.
And he understood that in our agreement with Comcast that we have access to what's called PEG, a public education and a government channel.
Yes.
So their educational channel was still out there and available for us to get. And we worked together to do the research, and I put through the legislation that got us an educational channel, which is now Channel 65, that's seen on Comcast and Verizon.
Yes.
That again is the, you know, the vision of Reverend Twinby Brown of what we could do in the media. And that was just an honor for me to be able to work along with him to get that happening.
Yes, and that's amazing to hear. I'm like always like, where are we writing this history down? Like, how are we getting this information to like other, well, everyone in the state of Delaware, but specifically, I think of like Wilmingtonans growing up in high school. I didn't learn, know any of this information about who did what. Like, I learned later on in life of all the key players and leaders in the community. Like, this needs to be taught. And her, like Dr. Brown, you started Channel 28. You put the legislation in for the educational piece for media, which is really important, and we have the government piece. So I know that media is key and important to you, and you're passionate about it, but I also know there were some other legislative things that you took the lead and charge on. And one of them was around gun violence, right?
Correct.
And I know that you had the CDC, you partnered with them to do a report and a study on the city of Wilmington. If you can talk a little bit about like, why did you think that was important, which we all probably can allude to why, but if you can explain like the why and then what came out of that?
Well, we were, you know, our numbers of death due to gun violence was growing, of us all trying to figure out what could we do to address it. Well, as a person in the community and one knowledgeable of our history, the African-American community here in the United States has gone through traumatic trauma, enslavement. Trauma is still embedded in us, and we have not completely healed from it. And every generation exerts that in a different way. Our young people are traumatized to the point where different, even more trauma than we've ever experienced is making them result in killing of each other. I saw in the newspaper that there, the CDC came into the lower southern part of Delaware to deal with the epidemic proportions of suicides among low-income white children. I said, "Well, if they're come for the, they come for the, you know, for suicide, why not for homicide?"
Right.
So I did the research and gathered all the data. You know, we didn't have to do another report because we got tons of reports about what's wrong with our children and what to do with them, but they're not being initiated. So I took all that data and sent it to the CDC and said that our children are suffering from the, you know, from trauma resulting in gun violence. And they came and did a complete investigation and proved that to be so, which is why to this very day, Governor Carney declares Delaware to be a what?
Trauma-informed state.
Trauma-informed state.
Yep.
Right. Okay, so all that has come from the CDC report that they did and responded back to my cry in 2015. Now, from it also, we were advised from the CDC to form a Wilmington Community Advisory Council, which is functioning strongly now, and has presented to all the powers to be a, from our research and our evidence-based studies of grassroots organizations, that mama pop store, the brothers who are just getting together because they see that they could make a difference.
Yep.
Those type of organizations are the ones that are, had the boots on the ground. We put together initiative called a Community Violence Prevention Initiative that will connect the dots of what we're all doing. You know, Wilmington and Delaware is known to be silos. We all work in silos.
Yeah.
Even as small as we are. And so this initiative is, and the Wilmington Community Advisory Council is serving as the glue to connect all of us together so that it closes the net of services that our children are falling through. And we have categorized our young people in three categories. Universal, every one of our children from this report needs an aspirin, I mean, a vitamin. Excuse me, call it vitamin. And then some children that need a little more, they need an aspirin. And then we got some children who we call indicated, they need penicillin, you know. So that child in the middle, the one who is not committed to crime yet, the one is not going to go to the youth program, that's being recruited for the gangs and to do the wrong thing.
Yep.
There's not much help you could get from your child for that. You go to the state who provides social services, they say, "Your child has to commit a crime first before we can help them."
Yep.
Well, we're trying to put initiative out there is where we can do intervention, upstream type of support to address those young people. We're waiting now for funding. We're getting some funding, but nowhere ever near what we need. But you know how we do.
That's usually the story.
We make a penny work. You know how we know how to make a penny work, especially when it comes time to our children.
So true. And what, another thing that I thought was so key that you said, you talked about like African-American trauma. And one of the last pieces of legislation that I think that you had proposed was about the Reparation Task Force. That was the last one, right?
Yes, it was.
So if you could even talk about that a little bit more on the establishment of that and what was your vision?
Well, you know, I have, in my tenure as a council member representing the city of Wilmington, I have engaged on a national level. I was the president of the National Black Caucus Local Elected Officials, a member of the National Policy Alliance, and you see other cities doing great things. So there are other cities who put in legislation for a penny tax on sodas, and that money would go towards youth. And then there is an organization in California who is trying to do a task force for reparations nationwide. Well, we Wilmington need to get ourselves organized and say, so we can identify, you know, what we need to address and what we would do if we were awarded reparations. So I felt it was important for us to get ready. Just imagine if that task force was in place and had done the report with the $1.4 billion that came into this state, the $55 million that came into the city.
Could have proposed something.
We would have already had it done with data to support equities that we are suffering from, from our enslavement and just the, you know, the institutionalized racism that is plaguing the city, this country. But it's still, where is the task force? I don't know. I know that I passed it for it, this council to put it into place. I don't know where it is yet.
Right. Well, I can get you an update on that.
Which means it's not there yet.
Yeah, it's not there yet. I know they had selected some people to be on it, and they were asking for recommendations outside of that.
But we're late.
I haven't heard much.
But we're, yes, too late.
I agree. I agree. Definitely, I agree with you about the Reparations Task Force. So what other initiatives or have you led or you supported during your term? I know there's like the Light Up Program, you had the reforming of Wilmington's parking system, so so many other different things. What was some, at least one more other thing that we can talk about that you did?
Sure. Well, one other thing that I realized in my tenure as a council member was, Fourth District has more, all of, most of corporate Wilmington.
True.
Okay, so I'm sitting in meetings here in corporations saying they don't have a good workforce. Then I go to civic associations and people saying they don't have a job.
Yep.
So how do we connect those two? And what we saw was that their requirements were somewhat different than the preparation of our community. So what I did was I created a workforce development program called PAID. PAID was an acronym for Preparatory Assistance Instruction and Development. Partnered with the Neighborhood House, and Arthur Boswell was executive director at that time. We applied for a grant, got funding, and we did four cohorts of 44 people each class because we use the neighborhood house's computer room. And we were, we had a 68% success rate of individuals either going into the construction trade or going into another field of career. We were successful in getting 85% of the employees for the Western and the new ShopRite employed through our workforce training. And, you know, that, I'm still working on workforce development, you know, and we were able to fulfill some of those passions and needs through community benefits agreements that also have done in my years, have done, the only five that's been done in the state. When development was taking place in the Fourth District, that those developers had to provide a way for local residents to get employment there.
Yes.
And not only just employment, but also businesses to become vendors and do subcontract work.
Yeah, I think that work is probably a catalyst for a lot of the conversations that are happening along like construction work and apprenticeships and all these things that are happening, or even like local hire. Like, how do we make sure that Wilmingtonans are getting on the jobs when we're developing our own city? And then on top of getting the jobs, making sure we can afford what's being built or that we're able to use it. So I think that was like the catalyst for that. And I know you were honored or awarded an honorary doctorate degree from Virginia University and from Lynchburg, Virginia, right? And it was for your leadership in economic development. If we can talk about that for a little bit?
Well, as I mentioned before, my participation on a national level with the National Black Caucus of Local Elected Officials and being a member of the National Policy Alliance, and also the World Conference of Mayors, it was the work that I did through those three national organizations that, and supporting that university, that they recognized my work and the various initiatives that I brought forth and that they awarded me that honorary doctorate degree. It was an amazing, you know, amazing thing for me because in my life, it always seems that when it came time for graduation, they stopped doing graduations in junior high school, so I didn't walk across the stage. And in high school, when I graduated, I was having my daughter. So I didn't have that privilege. And so when I was able to walk across the stage and receive my honorary doctorate degree, that was just something very, very special for me and, you know, and, you know, it made my family prouder of me. And so I carry the word "doctor" with pride.
Yes, and you should. It was a lot of accomplishments, great things, community work, like you deserve that. But I know we can talk all day about your accomplishments and the contributions that you had to the city of Wilmington, to the state, but I want to say thank you for coming on the show, on this program. I want to thank you guys all for listening, and thank you again. And tune into the Spiritual Revival Hour. Next week, we're presenting Words and Songs of Inspiration, Meditation, Consolation, and Education.
Get it, get it!
Oh, Jesus, you're my Lord. Yeah, Jesus, you're my Lord. I will obey your will.
I will obey.
I want to see my kingdom come.
I want to see your kingdom come.
Let my will be yours be done.
My will be done.
Say glory, glory to the Lamb, say.
Glory, glory to the Lamb.
You will take us into the Lamb.
You will take us into the Lamb.
We will conquer in your name.
We will conquer in your name.
And broken by Jesus' name.
And broken by Jesus' name.
Hell, hell, line of Judah.
Hell, hell, line of Judah.
How wonderful you are.
How wonderful you are.
Oh, Jesus, you're my King.
Oh, Jesus, you're my King.
Your life brings me to sing.
Your life brings me to sing.
I praise you all my days.
I praise you all my days.
Oh, you're perfect in all your ways.
Perfect.
Say glory, glory to the Lamb, say.
Glory, glory to the Lamb.
You will take us into the Lamb.
You will take us into the Lamb.
We will conquer in your name.
We will conquer in your name.
And broken by Jesus' name.
And broken by Jesus' name.
Hell, hell, line of Judah.
Hell, hell, line of Judah.
How wonderful you are.
How wonderful you are.
How wonderful you are.
How wonderful you are.
How powerful you are.
How powerful you are.
How powerful.
How powerful, wonderful.
Yes, you are. Yes, you are.
How wonderful, wonderful.
Yes, you are. Yes, you are.
How wonderful, wonderful.
Hey, yes, you are. Yes, you are. Hey, hey, hey! Yeah! Sunday best women, Melvin Christmas. Come on, everybody, clap your hands! Yeah! For the rest of my life.
For the rest of my life.
I'll serve him.
I'll serve him.
For the rest of my life.
For the rest of my life.
I'll trust him.
I'll trust him.
For the rest of my life.
For the rest of my life.
Yes, I will.
I'll trust him.
Oh, he's been so good to me.
He's been so good to me.
Yeah! Set me free. I'll serve the Lord. Can we say it again?
For the rest of my life.
Yeah!
I'll serve him.
I'll serve the Lord.
For the rest of my life.
I'll trust him.
For the rest of my life.
I'll serve him.
For the rest of my life.
I'll serve the Lord.
I'll serve him.
Because he's been so good to me.
He's been so good to me.
Yeah! He's set me free.
For the rest of my life.
I'll serve him.
Hey, hey, hey!
I'll serve the Lord.
I'll serve the Lord.
With my whole heart.
I'll serve the Lord.
I gotta serve the Lord.
I'll serve the Lord.
With a heart of blood.
I'll serve the Lord.
He's been mighty good.
Mighty good.
He deserves it.
I'll serve the Lord.
He gets all my worship.
I'll serve the Lord.
Yes, I'll serve the Lord.
I'll serve the Lord.
Hey, for the rest of my days.
I'll serve the Lord.
I give them all the glory.
I'll serve the Lord.
He's been mighty good.
I'll serve the Lord.
Hey! I got to serve.
I got to serve.
I got to trust him.
I got to trust him.
He's got the whole world.
I'll serve the Lord.
The whole world in his hands.
I'll serve the Lord.
Yeah!
I'll serve the Lord.
Yes, I will serve him.
I'll serve the Lord.
He's been mighty good.
I'll serve the Lord.
He's been mighty great.
I'll serve the Lord.
When I serve.
I'll serve the Lord.
Almighty God, my God.